So one, and I will call the meeting of the Planning Commission for January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Let's establish the quorum. Could we have the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Murray.
Carolyn, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Present.
Mr. Carazana.
Here.
Mr. Bivins.
Here.
And Mr. Clayborne is out today.
Correct.
Thank you.
Great, now that we have a quorum, we'll go to other matters not listed on the agenda from the public. Are there any matters that the public would like to speak to that are not listed on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, Carolyn, are there any online?
No, sir, there are not. No, there isn't.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any commissioners who would like to call or take any of the items off the consent agenda? And if not, can I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Great, thanks, Carolyn, could we have the roll?
Yes. Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Carolyn. All right, with that, we will move into the public hearings, and we will start with CCP two thousand and twenty-two dash two Albemarle County Public Safety Operations Center, Fashion Square Mall. Could we have the staff report, please?
Development process management. It's the Community Development Department, and this is a proposal to locate a public safety operations center at Fashion Square Mall in a portion of the old J.C. Penny Building. The facility would provide office space and supporting storage and vehicle maintenance services to the county police and fire rescue departments. These are considered back-of-the-house uses, if you're familiar with that term, and there'll be no public accessible accessible services provided at the site at this point in time. Just real quickly for the public that might be here or listening, I want to go over quickly what a compliance review process is, since it is a little bit different than what is typically reviewed here. Public uses are permitted by right in all zoning districts, but if the use is not specifically identified in the comprehensive plan, this compliance with the comprehensive plan review is required. It is a state code requirement, fifteen-two, twenty-two, thirty-two. A compliance review such as this determines whether the general location, character, and extent of a facility is in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. County staff reviews the proposal and makes recommendations to the commission. The commission acts on the proposal and makes the finding of whether it's in substantial accord or not. The commission's action relates only to the consist consistency of the proposal to the location and use with the comprehensive plan. It is not a recommendation of whether the facility should be constructed or not, and it's not a detailed evaluation of the development concepts. No action is required by the Board of Supervisors, but the board is informed of your action. They do have the option to appeal or make a different finding than you, but that is not a requirement of this process. Okay, so this is the location of the facility. As you can see, this is Fashion Square Mall in the old J.C. Penny's building. This is an aerial review of the site. Again, you can see the surrounding development, which includes residential development, which is what used to be called Squire Hills. I think it still may be Squire Hills and Glenwood Station are these two buildings here. Those are the closest residential. This is a hotel. This is a look at the building where the improvements will be installed. The photo of the left left obviously is the east side of the building, and the south side of the building is the photo on the right, and you can see on the south side of the building, the white colored boxes are the former location of the tire sale shop that was part of J.C. Penny a number of years ago. An overview of the proposal, the county has entered into a ten-year lease for a portion of the building, approximately thirty-two thousand square feet of a ninety-six thousand square foot building space. The remaining or existing retail space within the building is not impacted by this proposal and will remain available for lease by other businesses or entities. Within the structure, and you can see from the photo here where the improvements are going to be, for police, there'll be offices for the traffic unit, special operations and community support, canine unit, animal protection, mental health support, and then also storage for files, materials, and motorcycles. For fire rescue, there will be offices, supply, storage, and fleet maintenance within entirely within the building. Again, general access is not anticipated to the site, general public access is not anticipated to the site. There are no changes to the site itself and no major changes to the exterior of the building except for removal of a planter box and installation of a new garage bay and the reinstallation of one or more of the tire shop bays. Again, take another look at the building and that area right there, that is the planter box being removed, and the bay will be located there. And again, another picture, once again, of the old tire shop. The applicant, you can answer questions about any more specifics about these improvements. Related to the land use plan, the small area plan really governs this area in terms of land use recommendations, and the RIO area, excuse me, the RIO twenty-nine Small Area Plan encourages a mix of uses and recommends allow and allows a broad variety of uses, and that was done to provide flexibility for development to address market conditions and development opportunities. The language that's in the plan regarding uses is on the right side of that. Staff believes that the uses proposed for the operations center are consistent with the uses recommended and allowed within the flex plate place type area, which is what this area is designated in the RIO twenty-nine plan. Again, here is the language that indicates the uses that are permitted, which includes institutional light industrial manufacturing, storage, and distribution. There is a specific reference to auto sales and service that says it may be appropriate when the applicant can demonstrate minimal impacts of such a use to surrounding uses, especially residential uses in the public realm. Staff believes that the vehicle service activity will have minimal impact on the residential area, given the distance between the residential areas and the the actual service activity and based on the existing vegetation vegetative buffers that are there, and given the service activity will be with entirely within the building. The character and the extent of proposed activity, we believe, is compatible with the right site and surrounding uses. Additionally, this project also fosters some reuse of an existing vacant building and reintroduces activities into an increasingly vacant commercial center. Once again, quick picture of the vegetated area that you see, the apartments are here and Glenwood Station is here. Again, the the location by aerial, there are the apartments behind the buffer, and then there is Glenwood Station kind of across from the Belk's Building. So in summary, staff finds the location, character, and extent of the proposed public use consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, specifically the RIO twenty-nine Small Area Plan and Use Recommendations. The facility provides space needed for essential support functions for the public safety agencies and in a location that is central to the development areas in the county. And again, it fosters reuse of an existing vacant building and provides for additional activities in that center. Staff found no unfavorable factors as it relates to the proposal's consistency with the comp plan. We'll say that the RIO twenty-nine Small Area Plan focuses a lot on connectivity and character improvements, but because of the conditions of a leased facility and being used within an entire building, there are really no physical improvements that can be measured against what's the recommendation in the RIO twenty-nine plan. So we're silent to those issues not being addressed because there is no opportunity to address it within this proposal. Staff recommends that the commission find the location character and extent of the Albemarle County Public Safety Facility Operations Center to be in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan for the reasons we've just identified and here and in the staff report, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks, Mr. Benish, appreciate it. Many questions from the commission, starting with. All right, no?
Do.
Yes, sir.
So it's a really simple question. So why would a governmental activity have to go through this? It seemed that because it's this is a an arm of the government that that you'd get that that'd be not a free pass, but at least there would be an opportunity to say this is a function that's a governmental function, and we'd like to put it here.
Well, I guess, and Andy can correct me if I misspeak or do too much of a gross generalization, but the state code really calls for specificity in the comprehensive plan to identify that location, character, and extent. So the RIO twenty-nine or Small Area Plan really makes no reference to any public facility here. So because of that, we have to go through this process to ensure that the commission agrees with staff and the agency's finding that it's not in compliance.
Thank you.
And so to that, Mr. Bivins, I would just add that, well, though I appreciate your willingness to defer to the county government on those issues, it's the Virginia Code Section fifteen-point-two dash twenty-two, thirty-two, as Mr. Benish indicates, that specifically requires that public facilities undergo this type of review if they're not already listed on the comprehensive plan.
So thank you, perhaps, Terry, when we go into that, so Mr. McDermott, we can actually have a broader look at that, because this seems like this is one of those functions that that should just take place, because if, I mean, if we don't like it, you can vote the supervisors out, but it doesn't seem like this is something that should come to come here.
Well, in an ideal world, all public facilities would already be shown on the comprehensive plan, and this is just a matter of updating it to add a feature that wasn't anticipated with the adoption of the last comprehensive plan.
So I ask us if we can, if you can ask, as staffs, just make sure that those kind of reservations, revisions are possible.
Or do you have a question? Oh, I was just gonna make the comment that in some ways it's good for these sorts of things to come before us, because there's been criticisms in the past, particularly as regards to other requirements like critical slopes and stream buffers, that localities aren't following their own requirements. And I think by bringing this before the commission, that this shows that we're doing the same kind of due diligence that we would do if a citizen came before us.
You know, I would be willing to sort of stand alone beside that, but that's not what we're doing here. We're simply saying whether or not this function in this particular location, if the comp plan had been written at a particular date, or if we did the small to twenty RIO twenty-nine Small Area Plan, we'd had foresight to say, we should have a, we should have a governmental agency here. This isn't about slopes, this isn't about the disturbance of land, this is about whether or not a function meets with our comp plan, and those kinds of functions, I would feel very comfortable with giving a great deal of leeway. The slope idea, I understand, we can have, we can have a rigorous conversation about the value of slopes when this was in some areas of our county, which were, which were not, which appear to have been more created in the eighteen hundreds and somehow been preserved into history, as opposed to created when the earth was warm. And so we can have that conversation later on, but for these kinds of things, this is comp plan specific, is this a function that should be in the comp plan? And, you know, we would be moving on to Wakefield kennels if this wasn't here.
All right, any other questions from the commission or staff? All right, thank you. I will open the public hearing, and I'll call for the applicant's report. Is there an applicant? Yes, sir. I probably don't have to remind you that you have ten minutes.
You don't, but David had to remind me. Good evening, Planning Commission, Lance Stewart, I'm Director of the Department of Facilities and Environmental Services with Alamo County, and I've got a presentation that I'm going to be skipping through a lot of, because David covered it pretty well, so I'll try to be brief. So just as some background, we have known, the county has known for fifteen or twenty years that there were acute space needs for the Police Department and growing, it really snowball rolling downhill pace for the fire rescue department, as they have to assume additional responsibilities for the volunteer stations. There have been past submissions for new capital requests for new facilities that were unfunded. We spent several years looking for any kind of industrial space within the development area that was centrally located without much luck and until we thought of of pennies. So I'll walk through that just a little bit more, the the new, I'll go through the lease terms, just a little bit about the scope, not not much really there, and try to skip past what Mr. Benish covered. So one of the the driving forces behind this is a sort of a new function that the fire rescue department has taken on in recent years. It's not well-known that the county actually purchases all of the major apparatus for the volunteer stations and has assumed responsibility for for maintenance of those. And so at this point, you know, they have to go out to each of the county stations or the volunteer stations, perform what maintenance they can do there. Often, the facilities aren't right for that, sometimes they have to work outdoors, sometimes in winter, and if they need a part, just a small thing, you know, it's turn around, go back to central offices and go back. So they they really needed this for a while, and police has acute storage needs. And fire rescue has also outgrown their offices on the second floor of the county office building, and they have a lot of their quartermaster functions up there, so this helps us to backfill that space to meet their growing administrative space needs. So David listed some of the things that we are intending to put in the existing office spaces that that serve the penny's management and support team, and we'll go through that again. I've kind of talked about, obviously, it's a very central location, it's easy to access compared to most locations. It's got a huge mezzanine area for storage behind the tire shop, two-story, very secure space and a large warehouse. I'll just show you a picture of that real quick in a second, and it was available, again, going back to to being able to to find something. And I'll say, for a long-term planning, you know, this is a ten-year lease, we do have some options to renew, but, you know, our intent is to, you know, identify a permanent space and a permanent home to serve these functions over time, but it's a, it's a multimillion-dollar investment to do that, and, you know, we had acute needs that we that we felt we needed to address sooner rather than later. You've seen this picture, but not these. The top right picture there is the the second level of the mezzanine storage, it's much deeper than it looks there, and the bottom picture is, shows about a half of the warehouse space. Towards the end of that is access to loading dock and a trash facility on the north side of the property. That. And I've covered that, so I'll just walk you through, just clarifying, David pointed out where the where he thought the planter was that would need to be replaced, but it's actually to the right. There are some structural members that we have to avoid, and to the right of the, where you see the the truck going in, there's actually some electrical and mechanical rooms that we that we can't disturb. So this was really the only way, place we could get that in, so it does mean that the planters need to go, and I'll show you a little bit better of an angle. You can see here that we actually do have to cut into that surround of the door assemblies and rebuild that to match as close as we can, and also adding a similar architectural band around the, you know, very large roll-up door that will be going in there. And with that, I've managed to keep this under five minutes by a hair, despite my stumbling, so I'm happy to answer any questions or sit down, as is more appropriate to comp plan complaints review.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? The applicant? No? All right, great, thanks very much.
Thank you for your time.
Getting things backwards is a daily occurrence with me.
Pardon me?
Getting things backwards is a daily occurrence.
Yeah. So let me, I'll open up the, are there any comments from the from the public that are attending in person on this issue? Being none, Madam Clerk, are there any comments online?
No, sir, there sure aren't.
All right, sounds good. I will close the public hearing and open it up to any discussion. Or I will entertain a motion.
I do have a compromise for my colleague. Perhaps there's a way for us to do some of these under a consent agenda, in that if someone wants to pull it, they can pull it, and I'm looking at counsel over here to see if he's good, he's right looking at something quickly, can we do, can you do that?
We've actually, we actually discussed doing this one as a consent agenda. We actually wanted to consult, I wanted to consult with you first on that. We used to do them years ago, depending on the complexity of them by consent agenda. The planning commission can pull them if they feel like they need further discussion and be rescheduled, so we're happy to do that. But because it hasn't been a precedent for years, we were reluctant to kind of jump into it without discussing that with you.
So I think it's within the realm of possibilities, as long as the Board of Supervisors doesn't direct that the planning commission hold a public hearing, in looking at the statute, which is what I was looking for, it says that the commission may, and at the direction of the governing body, shall hold a public hearing. So unless until the board directs the commission to hold a public hearing, I think it's in the in the may status.
I think you're going to see different scales of activity. If you recall, the police firing range would probably not be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would depend on the on the application, but as you said, we can pull it.
You can pull, yeah.
So we could make that determination. But anyway, here we are.
Here we are, we're here.
All right, it sounds like we're, are we finished with discussions? We're good? All right, does anybody want to make a motion?
I move, I would be willing to move.
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun.
That's okay.
You're out of here.
It's the recommendations really drafted like a.
I think you just did it. I think I just did it.
Yeah, so, Mr. Bivins, I might recommend that that you look at the end of the staff report, there's a recommendation.
And it's drafted like a motion.
And 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 you could say, I move that the commission finds that and then continue with the recommendation.
I move that the commission find that the location, character, and extent of the CCP two thousand and twenty-two zero-two Albemarle County Public Safety Operations Center, public facility and public use thereof, has proposed to be in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan for the reasons identified as favorable factors in this staff report.
Thank you, we have a motion and we have a second, any further discussion? All right, Carolyn, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, I will. Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, everyone. All right, we'll move on to the second item, Wakefield Kennel, SP two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-seven, SE two thousand and twenty-two dash fifty-six, and SE two thousand and twenty-two dash fifty-seven. We had the staff reports.
Good evening, Commission, my name is Kevin McCollum, I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division of Almar County Community Development, and tonight I'll be giving staff's presentation on special use permit application, SP two thousand and twenty-two twenty-seven, Wakefield Kennel. This is a proposed special use permit amendment for a commercial kennel. The subject property is located at seven ninety Wakefield Farm in Earlysville, Virginia, just west of the Charleston-Almar Airport. The property is four point six-three acres in its own rural areas. The existing conditions of the site include an existing commercial kennel that has been in operation since the mid nineteen fifties. It obtained a special use permit in July of nineteen seventy-six and was expanded at that time. The facility has operated since then until present day without any additional significant changes. The kennel has an eight thousand square foot building with associated parking and ten thousand five hundred square feet of outdoor runs for the animals. A majority of the surrounding properties are low-density residential, ranging from half to two acres in size. There are also nearby rural area uses, including a large farm to the east along Wakefield Farm. The applicant has requested a special use permit for replacement of the existing kennel facility with a new and expanded facility to be built adjacent to the existing kennel. The existing facility will remain operational until the new kennel is completed. The proposed kennel is larger with eleven thousand six hundred and fifty square feet and a hundred kennels, but has a slightly smaller area for outdoor runs. On the screen is the conceptual plan that provides an overview of what the facility will look like once construction has been completed. In addition to the special use permit request, the applicant has requested two special exceptions, the first to reduce the five hundred foot required setback to any agricultural or residential lot line, and the second is a reduction in the required number of parking spaces. I'd like to quickly point out two small typos in the staff report for the setback special exception on page four. Section five eleven B should be corrected to five eleven A, as showed on the screen here, and for the parking special exception at the top of page five, there are twelve existing parking spaces adjacent to the existing facility, not not nine. The special use permit in nineteen seventy-six required nine spaces, but they actually provided twelve. Staff evaluated these special exceptions based on what was submitted with the applicant's narratives, which did cite the appropriate zoning ordinance sections and the number of proposed or number of existing parking spaces. Staff just made a slight error in the staff report. For factors and findings, the special use permit application was reviewed under the factors for consideration as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes that the proposed new facility will not be detrimental to the adjacent parcels, will not change the character of the nearby area, will continue to be in harmony with the rural area zoning district, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. With that, staff recommends approval of SP two thousand and twenty-two twenty-seven Wakefield Kennel for the reasons and what the conditions as recommended in the staff report. And with that, are there any questions? I do also have motions on the next slide. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much. Any questions from the commission?
I was, I'm just curious, I noticed that, you know, the request for a reduction in parking, and when I saw how much parking would have been required, I started laughing. So I guess that's my immediate reaction, you know? So I'm just trying to understand, is it just because commercial square footage times is square feet equals this many parking spaces?
Yeah, the the number of parking spaces for kennels is, I believe, one space per four hundred square feet, and so with the kennel of that size, there's just a large number of parking spaces.
Yeah, maybe something we can revisit in the zoning ordinance update. We ran into a similar situation with another kennel I looked at for another. We ran into a similar situation with another kennel I looked at for another jurisdiction. It was similar where the dogs are being dropped off and then they, we gave them an exception because it was really ridiculous. They're not parking and staying and waiting for Fluffy. They're leaving Fluffy or Rod, wherever, whatever. All right. I also enjoyed the image from the applicant of what people expect to see in a kennel site. You know, I, I, I will be curious here from the applicant if that's the actual suite they're proposing or just giving us an example of what the modern day dog owner hopes to have in a kennel. Anyway. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a couple of quick questions. So the intent is, is to clarify that the old facility will be taken down or, or used for a different purpose?
Yep, it'll be completely removed. They're planning on phasing it during the site plan stage, so the intent is to keep the kennel active while they're building the new one. And as the new one, you know, gets completed, then they'll then take out that existing one.
Do you have the, the approximate distance that the existing building is from the property line?
The existing building?
Right.
I do not.
I didn't, I didn't see that.
I could get that for you. I'd have to measure on, on my computer if we can come back.
We can get those.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
We don't have to get it right now. Working on that.
Is there any other questions?
That's all I have.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the commission? I just had one quick question. The surface for the parking, is that, I didn't see it anywhere on the drawings, but is that anticipated to be asphalt? Do you know? Can I ask the applicant?
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right. I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant for their report. I think you know the process, but you have 10 minutes and when the light turns yellow, you should start wrapping up your comments. Thanks.
There we go. Okay. All right. Good evening. My name is Kendra Moon. I'm a civil engineer with Lion and Grade here representing Wakefield Kennel. I'm also joined by the Dopplemeyer family, the owners of Wakefield Kennel. So Kevin has covered a lot of this, but Wakefield Kennel is an existing commercial kennel in Northern Albemarle. We're requesting a special use permit or an amendment to an existing special use permit, which allowed the expansion of the current kennel. We're requesting to demolish and replace it on site, both because of the age of the existing facility, but also because of an increase in demands for larger pet suites. So Karen, to answer your question, that there will be some larger pet suites and some smaller, more traditional kennels kind of offering more of a variety for consumers or customers. And so this new facility will help this family business to continue to meet their customer needs. As mentioned, this is in the rural areas and surrounded by residential uses. All right. So we've already covered a lot of this. The building was built in the mid 1950s. The general layout of the site is existing parking adjacent to the building with fenced-in area surrounding and this large turf field next to the building. Roughly half the site is wooded. The dogs are currently able to enter and exit the building freely between the hours of approximately 6:30 AM and 6 PM when staff are present. Their indoor kennels are connected to these outdoor areas with an open door, so they're able to enter and exit freely. Currently, there are up to six employees at any given, any given time and 12 parking spaces. This project will be phased so that the existing building can remain while they're building the new site. And this is largely because it's, you know, a small family business. They can't afford to close while their new building's under construction. So propose, this parking area will be asphalt. It's proposed in roughly the same location of the existing building. There will be a sound dampening fence surrounding the facility and indoor suites with some more space for the dogs. See, this is the image Karen was talking about. This is from Pet Paradise, but it's a similar model. They're also a commercial kennel. And this is an image of the Acusta Fence, Sound Dampening Fence material. It doesn't have to be foliage like that. It could just be a black fence material, but this is just to give you an idea. And then in the lower left corner is a Morton Building. This is very similar to what the building will look like. There will be the same hours of operation and same employees. Increase in parking spaces and there will be a slightly different approach with the dog's playtime. So instead of an open door that lets them in and out whenever they please, there will be designated times where a few dogs at a time are taken out during the day. So they'll be out still the same times of the day, but just limited dogs at a time. For a little bit more detail, an increase in nine kennels proposed, slightly larger building, but a reduced outdoor area. So the overall gross floor area is slightly smaller. And a slightly more trips per day just because of the number of kennels. And then to answer your question, Louise, Lewis, there, the property line, the closest property line is going to be 17 feet closer now. And the nearest residence will be 32 feet closer than previous, but still relatively low difference. This use is largely supporting the local community. It adds an amenity to the community. And there was very positive feedback in the community meeting. Honestly, the, the, the most feedback that we got was that neighbors would be disappointed. They could no longer see the dogs with the sound dampening fence. We were asked if we could provide a little cutout in the fence for them to see the dogs. So, and a lot of these neighbor, I mean, if this has been here almost 70 years, so these people moved in knowing that there was a kennel next door. Also, we're sensitive to tree preservation on site. The building footprint will be in the area of existing turf. So very limited number of trees will need to be taken down. As for the special exceptions, it's worth noting that the existing kennel was in place before the adoption of the ordinance. So the existing kennel does not meet this setback requirement. And the proposed kennel would not either. There's a 500-foot setback from the building to, from any adjacent agricultural or residential property. And since this is surrounded by residential property, the parcel would have to be 29 acres to meet this 500-foot setback in all directions. And it's a 4.63 acre parcel. So that blue box is showing a 29. That's showing what the parcel would have to be in order to meet the setback. And for the parking, so I think the, the problem with the, the zoning ordinance requirements for parking here is it includes the outdoor area for the pets. It's any area where the dogs are occupying pretty much. So we have to include the outdoor run area in the parking calculation, which requires 51 parking spaces. So the existing use itself would require 52 parking spaces, but they only have 12. So obviously the extra 40 spaces aren't needed. We are requesting or proposing an additional eight parking spaces though, for a total of 20, to help alleviate, alleviate peak drop-off times, especially during holidays. And I think I've answered all of the questions, hopefully, but that's all.
Great. Thanks very much. Any questions for the applicant from the commissioners?
I just have one. So on your, on your plan, you have that when you put in the, the pond, the sort of retention pond, and you say there's going to be a swim area, how will it be a swim area when it's dry here in the summer? Are you going, is it going to be consistently filled with water?
Yeah. So it's a, a dry detention pond, which only fills when it rains and then it, it will be dry most of the.
It's really not, it's not an amenity.
No, it's not an amenity. They were, sorry if it came off that. It was not meant to look. I think SWM, not like for swimming, but stormwater management.
That's right.
It's just only for pets.
Oh, no, that is a thing though.
Part of the suite, you get that with.
That's what I thought. If you have, if you have the larger suite.
Right.
Then you had sort of. Right. Like, you know, I might get left there.
Any other questions? I just had one quick question. You mentioned there are six current employees and there are three employee parking spaces. Is the, is it anticipated that with the growth that the number of employees will also grow and would they need additional spaces or?
Yeah. So the three employee parking spaces, that is not meant to mean that there, that's the only employee parking. But that's kind of in the back. That's more like maintenance. There's a pole barn located back there. So that would be really more for like kind of maintenance or just, it's an, it's an existing area. And I think it's probably used as informal parking when, you know, they just pull up to the pole barn. So that's just the three employee parking spaces. They're meant to just formalize and acknowledge that it's used sometimes. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Great. Well, thank you. Thanks very much. Are there any comments from the public that are currently present? Being none, any comments, Carolyn, online?
No, sir, there sure isn't.
All right. Great. With that, I will close the public hearing and open it up to discussion.
Yes, I attended a community meeting that was held and as the applicant said, it seemed that, that they've been a great neighbor. And that many neighbors came out and supported the project. If they hadn't mentioned it, I was going to mention the thing about the neighbors, sad that they couldn't see the dogs anymore. So overall, I'm, I'm in support of this.
I'll just mention, it seems like an improvement with the soundproofing of the building. The, the soundproof, or not soundproof, but sound ameliorating fence was impressive. And also their attempts to not just let the dogs run around whenever, but to start to control how many are out there being rambunctious at once. So I thought, I think it's, I think it actually improves the site over present conditions. And I'm definitely in support of it. It seems like, and to your point that they're good neighbors also.
And I also just want to commend the, the, the presentation and the level of thoroughness. I mean, small project is not very large. Obviously, it's not, it's a, it's a, it's a small family business. And they did a very thorough presentation. Storm waters addressed. And which a lot of times we get larger companies that come to us and they don't have a stormwater. So obviously they're probably adding some impervious here, but they're dealing with it. And so, yeah, just commend everyone on, on the thoroughness of the presentation.
I, I'm, I support this project also. For those who may not have dogs, I will let you know that this particular organism, this particular company has an absolutely brilliant reputation as a kennel in our community. And so to see that they're upgrading their facilities, I think will be well received by those who need those kinds of facilities. I would also like, if possible, if staff could just share with the Misty Mountain applicants, this Acusti block fence. Because that fence may in fact help that particular applicant, as you know, we wrestled with. Well, we didn't wrestle with it, but the, some of their neighbors wrestled with the sense of, of noise and, and vulnerability. And perhaps that could be suggested to them as a, as an option to help them as they're, as they go forward with their project. I will say that this is just a bit of, this doesn't mean anything, but I will say that at one point we were doing something at our house and we had an inspector come and they thought we were doing a, a, a private or we were in the kennel business, which we weren't. And that's another story of why they thought we were in the kennel business. And they, and they referenced, they referenced this kennel about, you know, are we sure that this is something that we want to do given Wakefield's like? Yeah. That was very nice of you to reference them. That's not what we're doing here. So clearly somebody appreciates in the county office, the good work that they're doing out there. So yes, I support this.
Great. I echo everything the commissioners have said and also commend the applicant for a great job. So congratulations on that. Does anybody like to make a motion?
Well, if you could put the motion in front of me.
I move to recommend approval of SP 2022-00027 Wakefield Kennel with conditions as recommended in the staff report.
Second.
Great. Thanks. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. Carolyn, could we have the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Mr. Carizana?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. All right. We will move on to the next item, SP 2022-28, 2240/2241 Gobbler's Ridge Development. May we have the staff report? Big time.
Thank you for your patience as we switch off. Rebecca Ragsdale with the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting the Gobbler's Ridge Development Rights Request for you this evening. First, we'd like to orient you to the property. It is a little over four acres, 4.82 acres, and it's located along Route 53 or the Thomas Jefferson Parkway. And it is, it does include two existing parcels at the corner of 53 and then Gobbler's Ridge goes across the existing parcel and then on back to serve the other lots. This is an aerial view that shows you there are two dwellings existing located on the left side and then, or the west side and the east side of the existing Gobbler's Ridge. This is an existing physical survey of the parcel. We outline the subdivision history in the staff report that led us to this point, which did include an error in terms of the number of development rights that were assigned to this parcel. Although there are two existing dwellings on this 4.8 or so acre parcel. The development rights note that said it had two development rights, which the current owner relied on was incorrect. There was some subdivision history that included the parent parcel 36 that led to the current configuration of 36E. So this is really to grant the parcel the additional, additional development right for the existing dwellings so that there is the potential. so that there is the potential to subdivide in the future. Without the development right, the county could not create further non-conforming situations. Um, so that's the request this evening. The, um, we analyzed this special use permit against the criteria that we typically do. It's something we don't see very often in terms of existing conditions. We didn't see any impacts or detriment that we needed to address with recommended conditions of approval. If they do choose to subdivide in the future, then those, regulations and the subdivision ordinance would be applicable. Um, so the character wouldn't really change, um, and this would correct, correct the prior error, excuse me. We don't typically support additional development rights in the rural areas, but this is a unique circumstance. So we did recommend approval of this without any necessary conditions. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks very much. Any questions from the commission? Either way, you can go.
I, I just say, I'd assume that the kind of mistakes that are made would not happen today.
Yes, we do have some additional measures in place. It was something that goes back a ways, but we are careful in terms of the development right notes and, um, parcel research before we approve Platts.
Thank you.
I guess I, it's just, my question is along the same lines, and I, I'm not saying you personally made this mistake back when. Um, but, so it is, to make sure I understand, the county made a mistake. And, and how, and then represented that mistake to the landowner, who then made various decisions based on that mistake. So we're trying to, we've made a mistake. It's a bit late, we have the option now to correct it, so it's not a non-conforming situation.
So the licensed land surveyors prepare, prepare the Platts, so it's, there's responsibility there. And then,
Okay.
We approved the plat with that note that didn't have the correct development rights on it. Um, which is how, you know, the lot of record has that note on it today.
I, I, I really do like complex math, so that, so I need to just put that out there. That's like, I really, really like differential education, that equations. But could you go back please to the, to the plat? But I will have to say, this is what, this, I know this is a really simple item, but I really struggled with this. I couldn't figure out what, what we were doing to what piece of land. And, and so I, if you would just sort of bear with me for a moment, please.
Right, so this is the existing condition survey. Um, so there isn't a proposed lot configuration for this one. Yet, they haven't submitted the proposed plat.
Okay, so would, would we expect at a time, in a future time, not us, but you? Would you expect to the future time that what we, what we're seeing at, where it says at the top of the page IS, uh, would there be another home there?
No, there won't be any additional dwellings.
So no additional dwellings?
Correct.
So all we're simply saying is that where we see the twenty-seven by, the twenty-six, twenty-seven by thirty-seven, that will be its own plat. Down the bottom, I don't have a pointer, but where we have, where it says sixty-nine point one and fifty-nine point nine, will that be its own plat?
Right, so there's the two existing dwellings, and the lots would be configured to meet the minimum of two acre lots. Um, and then, you know, the drain field and well would have to be located on the same parcel as the dwelling. Um, so that may, you know, with Gobbler's Ridge going through it, um, you know, it may involve, um, some non-contiguous, well, it is contiguous, but Gobbler's Ridge still bisecting,
Right.
some of the properties.
But we're not looking by, by the correction we're making this evening, or, or perhaps we're moving towards making this evening. We are not enabling a new dwelling, and that we're really, we're still only dealing with number two two four one and number two two four zero.
Yes, that's correct.
And we are not dealing with, um, up at the end here, where it says the Frost, where it says the Frost Parks, which I, there's some, there was some confusion because some of the, some of the names were sort of on both pieces of property. But that, that's two three two five address, that's not included in this, in this conversation this evening.
Right, that's correct. So the boulder line outlines the current configuration. Um, and it is, you know, shaped the way it is in terms of going down towards the other, the other parcel thirty-six E one.
But Gobbler's Ridge will basically become a boundary line for the second property.
Not necessarily.
Because it hasn't been developed yet.
So there's, there's nothing that prohibits an access easement from, from bisecting a property as it does now. There isn't a way to configure it and comply with the subdivision ordinance where a portion, um, would not still cross a lot because of where the drain fields are located.
But basically, we're not seeing the subdivision, we're not seeing an image of what they propose for subdivision right now. We're seeing the historic.
Right, we're seeing the existing conditions in this. Um, so maybe calling it the proposal is not the right.
I think that's what was confusing me, because I thought. And I, I'm trying to wrap my head around this thinking like, yeah, well, if this is the proposal, I don't.
Grant the, um, the additional development right that's needed to work.
Okay, so this is the histor, this is what it looks like today.
Yes.
Pre, pre-proposal.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, it's still a proposal for a subdivision right.
I get that, but this doesn't.
The actual subdivision.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Liz. Yeah, this doesn't represent that, right? I, I was trying to make it work.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out.
I'm good. Any other questions for staff? Okay, great, thank you. Um, with that, I'll open the public hearing, and is the applicant here? Good evening.
Good evening, how are y'all doing?
Good, thanks. So I think you know the drill, it's, your light will turn green and you have ten minutes.
This is the first time, so thank you.
Okay, sure, when it turns yellow, they just need to wrap things up.
Okay, um, so she pretty much covered most everything. Um, there's two.
Oh, I'm sorry, could you also state your name?
Sorry.
And address, thank you.
Clayton Poffenberger, like, physical address or the address of the property?
Physical address.
Uh, forty-four eighty-four Watts Passage, Charlottesville.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, the proposal is to, in, in order to try to regain that additional development right, that was thought to be, uh, on the plat, you know, upon purchase. Uh, you know, there were two separate dwellings on separate parcels until ninety-one. Uh, we did some due diligence and, on the plat in oh-three, it stated, you know, there were two development rights remaining. Uh, kind of went on that in regards to the property. So when we purchased the property, you know, the dwellings existed. And nothing has really changed. Uh, the houses are there. In regards to, you know, a couple of y'alls questions you had, you know, that, that doesn't necessarily include the proposed division. It's just trying to regain that development right to propose a division, uh, later on possibly, and have that opportunity if that's the so, uh, course we choose. Uh, there would be no additional dwellings allowed by count, by y'alls rules, I believe. You know, just because two developments with two houses. So, um, that is all we're trying to do is just, you know, bring it all up to the paperwork, up to what it was, in a sense. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that y'all have, or, um, I could help you with in understanding better.
Great. All right, thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Great, if I ask more questions, I'll lose my current understanding, so I'm just gonna figure where I'm at in this game. I'll put my cards down.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public that is present, or that are present? Being none, are there any online, Carolyn?
No, sir, there isn't.
All right, thank you. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to discussion.
I'm good now. I, I, I understand.
All right, we're rolling.
It's your district, sir.
Sounds good. Would anybody like to make a motion? If not, I'm happy to.
Your district.
All right. I would like to, uh, move to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, to grant one additional development right for the reasons stated in the staff report. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, I, I will only say that I was surprised that the Thomas Jefferson Parkway, made itself over there. And I, I mean, that was, that was an interesting, that was interesting to sort of see that the, the Thomas Jefferson Parkway, continues on the other side of the house. But, you know, it does, and, uh, whatever, I guess that helps when you sell your house to say, I live on Thomas Jefferson Parkway.
All right, any further discussion? No, thanks, Carolyn. Could I get the roll please?
Yes, Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Skyhawk?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Carazana?
Hi.
Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, that will move on to the next item, SP twenty twenty-two dash thirty, Spring Hill Farm Development Rights Request. Can we have the staff report?
Um, thank you. I'll also be presenting this item, Rebecca Ragsdale, and the, um, planner with community development. Um, this also has a history where you must follow the math a little bit. But the parcel. The parcel is, um, the current parcel is four hundred and forty-two point four two acres in size, and goes back to some nineteen eighty-one special use permits. Um, then we'll go over that history in a minute, but it is a large parcel that has frontage on Dick Woods Road, um, Grassmere, um, Ivy Depot, to name a few. Um, so there were a fair number of public notice signs that were posted, and all of the abutting owners notified. Um, we didn't have any objections to this one or the, the other one I should have mentioned. Zooming in, you know, we, we indicated the portion of the property where the lots would be proposed, and that's from Dick Woods Road. Let me get my pointer, because I realize you can't see my pointer. Um, but the access will be from, um, Dick Woods Road, where there is an existing entrance. Um, the parcel does have some significant, uh, resources that we mentioned in terms of Ivy Creek and the floodplain along Dick Woods Road, and some streams that are along the parcel, um, in this area. Um, it kind of naturally, segments this portion of the property from, um, the remainder of it. And as we said in the report, there has been, um, you know, the original subdivision was approved in nineteen eighty-one, under a provision of the ordinance that allowed you to utilize your development rights, which allow you to create a minimum of two acre lots, but also create, utilize what you could, uh, the development, residential development that you could achieve with your twenty-one acre lots. It allows you to basically cus, cluster it and do, um, smaller lots than twenty-one acres in size. So when this was originally approved, they, um, utilized all but seven of the rights that they had. Um, so in order to utilize any of the additional development potential, then a sub, a special use permit amendment is necessary. So there was a history along the way of, um, the proposal for a hundred and some acre parcel, um, to be accessed off of Dickwood Road, Dick Woods Road, which is the same area that we've been talking about with this current proposal. The prior proposal also included a stream crossing and fill in the floodplain, which is not necessary in this case. Um, so that brings us to present day, and sort of the history of this parcel. Those lots that were created are primarily in an area where the former village of Ivy was designated. Um, but we do feel like this is, again, I said, uh, with the prior one, somewhat of a unique circumstance. Whereas this parcel, um, this residue was, um, left primarily for conservation and agricultural uses. So the proposal includes, um, uh, approximately a twenty-eight acre lot and then a sixty-four point five two acre lot. Over the course of the review, the, um, applicant has corrected the acreage, but some of the elements of the proposal include, um, access for the two lots, from the existing, um, entrance off of Dick Woods Road, which was established with prior logging activity. Um, and then Lot One for one residence, and then Lot Two for another residence. There are conservation areas, um, that are identified, and then also a commitment to preserve, uh, the stream buffer areas. Um, so the applicant is, um, still approaching this very much from a, you know, a conservation standpoint and is agreeable. Um, two additional conditions consistent with some of those in the history of the parcel that, um, limit clearing, and also, um, water, additional water protection provisions, because it is, um, does have all of those critical resources and is in a water supply protection area. Um, primarily with this request, we didn't, the residential lot layout is not inconsistent with what you see in that part of the county, um, in Ivy and along Dick Woods Road in terms of the residential lots. So we didn't feel like there would be any detriment to any abutting parcels, or the character changing with regard to the residential pattern. And then, um, we've proposed conditions that, um, still retain the agricultural and, um, conservation and values of the property. So we feel like those conditions and, um, features of, of the proposal with the elements of the plan provide that consistency with the comprehensive plan. Now, this is one where the conditions in the staff report, um, intend to get at those goals. The staff report you received, since the staff report you received, we have updated the conditions of approval, which we feel like are more enforceable and in line with the current ordinance and, um, condition language, so they're not, and they also are, uh, based, some, the change is based on some of the feedback from the applicant. So in terms of what the changes are to the conditions, we gave you a printed sheet of those conditions. Um, some of them are just simply clarifications. Um, the first condition is, making sure that the, the residue of the parcel could not be further subdivided without another special use permit. Um, and that, that no further division of Lot One or Two is permitted. So they would each have just one residential unit allowed. The typical condition that you see nowadays with regard to general accord with the proposed lot layout, so that identifies the conservation areas and the access to lots. Excuse me. Um, we mentioned one dwelling unit per lot. Now, condition five is the one that has primarily changed. There was the notion or prior thought with the condition that the requirement would be that the applicant would obtain a riparian easement. And we feel like it's better to have the enforceable standards as a special use permit condition, instead of relying on a, future easement and future easement holder and language that, um, you wouldn't have before you this evening. And, you know, this is a special use per, permit condition that would be added to the plat and still be part of, um, the regulations of the property and enforceable by, um, the zoning ordinance. So we thought that that would be a more appropriate approach. And so what it addresses is, um, the designation and management of the stream buffers, a tree planting plan, um, that would include replanting those areas that have been disturbed, uh, for the existing access road. And then also, um, a best management practices plan that gets at agricultural activities in those, um, regulations regarding if they do have livestock, nutrient management plans, fencing, um, and then ensuring, um, native plants in the riparian buffers. So we have reviewed this, um, with the county engineer and the applicant. Um, and staff are comfortable with these conditions, granted that, um, you know, we have your input this evening before they're finalized to the board. Uh, and also, condition six was amended just to clarify that the, uh, clearing of land for residential uses is limited to two acres. Um, and then that does not include any of agricultural and forestal activities or farm buildings that might be associated with the property. So we are recommending approval with the updated conditions. As I mentioned, um, there's the continuation of preservation of the, um, sensitive areas on the site. And then, um, we do have to mention that additional residential development is not condition, consistent with the goals of the, comprehensive plan, but we feel like with these updated, updated conditions, we've addressed the concerns that we previously had regarding not, um, clarifying conservation areas and, um, preservation regulations on the parcel. So I will pause for any questions now.
If the.
Thanks very much.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Why don't we start at this end?
If, if the forestry road had not been there, would staff have recommended that the road go there?
I'm sorry.
If the forestry road had not been there, would that have been the loc-
If the forestry road had not been there, would that have been the location that staff would have recommended accessing the parcel?
Um, well, it didn't. It's, we're okay with the location, it avoids impacts to the floodplain under pro- you know. Which is an improvement from prior plans, engineering has reviewed it and they don't have any concerns, it's adequate for two lots, so. Um, you know, I don't think that there is, I think it's probably the best spot, given the characteristics of the property. Um, unless there is a spot where the stream impacts could have been avoided, um, but the impacts are already. On the property, so.
There, there's a big difference between short-term impacts and long-term impacts. And from my experience, the long-term impacts of having a stream, a, a road through a stream buffer. Are worse than the short-term impacts of making a new road. Um, it, so it's a, as a future matter for policy, when we look at, you know, our, our future policy. I would recommend not grandfathering in logging roads and farm roads.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I'll, I'll just make a comment on what you just said. I guess, you know, one of the things to keep in mind, I've done a lot of research and literature reviews on logging road impacts. And you'd be surprised how long, if you drive, driven a heavy truck over a road over multiple years, it. It does create a sort of permanent impression. And so it's not really a temporary impact, that road has already made an impact on the landscape. And it's not something that you'll probably come back in twenty years and still be able to tell where the logging road was, even if not one more truck crosses it. So um, I, I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that it's, it's sort of a temporary or not impacted area. Anyway, I'll just leave it at that. That's all, that's my only comment. I do, I do like the conditions the staff developed, though I think they're pretty tight and uh are the kind of things I would have recommended.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir. So, if, if we can look at, at condition number six. And if you can go back to um the plat or the proposed plat. Please, and if you could use your marker to just identify where the boundary line between nine uh, between fifty, ninety-five and the two lots. Would that be the um forestry road?
So this is the um access that is existing.
Right.
That would serve Lot One and then.
And then.
The driveway would continue to serve Lot Two.
Okay.
So the parcel boundary line between the two is.
Yeah.
There, and then the northern boundary.
And then the fifty-nine and the fifty, if we, in the fifty-eight, ninety-five, that's the one at the bottom where your cursor is right now.
So this conservation area would be part of um. Lot One.
Oh, part of the twenty-one.
So that was one of the changes that was made since the initial submittal. Um, so while the area is not, is no longer part of the residue, it will um have those um. Protections in place with the special use permit condition.
So here's the opt-out clause on this. So it says that you can only do two acres of, um, you can only clear two, two acres on Lot One and Lot Two. Our lot in condition six, it, their land, land is allowed to be cleared. In the, in ninety, fifty-eight, ninety-five. If it can be, if it can be characterized, if the clearing can be characterized as either, as either falling under agricultural and forestry use. S- and I don't know how easy or difficult that is to do in the county, I'm not sort of casting dispersions. All I'm simply saying is that it's going to be possible to clear additional acreage in that land under condition six, when we, when we prohibit clearing. Up in the, in the big lot, and so it seems that there's an inconsistency there. For me, at least, now, maybe that that's a, that this is a, a small trivial item, but it does, it does look like that if we can characterize something as. As forestry or agricultural, that it would be able to be cleared in the fifty-eight, ninety-five area.
So the. Mr. Bivens, if I could correct maybe a misconception there, that condition six actually applies to the entire subdivision. It applies to lots one and two and the existing fifty-eight, ninety-five.
Uh, yeah, but it's, it says that, but if, if we're carving lots one and two out of fifty-eight, ninety-five.
Correct.
And we're saying that in lots one and two, you're only, you, there's a, there, you're only allowed to clear two acres for dwellings and. Pools and volleyball and pickle court and all that foolishness, but that at the bottom of all of that. In the area that since, since Lot One and Two are, have fifty-eight, ninety-five, plot fifty-eight, ninety-five as included in their parcel. In what I'm understanding.
So, so the, the same rule applies to all three parcels?
I understand it, but it's.
Okay.
But while we, but still, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is that while there's a prohibition at a clearing two acres in the main part, in the main. Lot One and Two, there's a permission, there's a permissible clearing down the bottom. So I don't know why we're, why, what I'm coming to, I don't know why we're, what we gain by prohibiting two acres. When I, when I can go down below and clear something clearly, that's what I'm.
Because there's the distinction between clearing for residential purposes and clearing for agricultural and forestry uses.
And, and some of it is clearing for view. It, you know, some of that gets cleared for, for a view under our, under agricultural and forestry.
There, there's a fairly permissive, as you probably know, there's a fairly permissive allowance for converting, for example, forest land to um agricultural land.
Right, right, which is where I'm, which is where I'm.
I, no, I, I, I share your concern, because it, I mean, it says this under sixth line two, this condition does not apply to agricultural or forestry uses.
And then you keep going.
So then you can clear as much as you like under agriculture. And our stream buffer ordinance does not actually prohibit clearing in the buffer for agriculture.
It does not.
And, and just to add something to that, typically fencing for livestock is, is only about thirty-five feet.
Right.
Um, if that, and, and then, and, and that should, we should spell out what that buffer should be if li- lives are going to be fenced out. And that's going to be a condition, there should be a, a width associated with that. And then for row crops, we have no buffer in the county, so you can put those row crops all the way.
But I could put sunflowers there, for instance.
Or you could, or you could do hay.
Yeah, you can, or I prefer sunflowers.
So the um, the purpose of the condition, you know, the impacts that we're seeing are from the residential development. So we wanted to put a limit on how much of the parcel is developed for residential development. And then we thought that condition five went beyond the ordinance and covered um additional impacts to streams. We wanted to make sure there wasn't a circumstance where these standards didn't apply. There might be a case where there is disturbance where the bu- the stream buffer ordinance wouldn't apply. So it is, you know, additional measures in place for the property. Um, so that was the thought process. Um, we didn't want to um further restrict the agricultural or forestal activities. That language in six is to clarify that farm buildings are not going to be subject to that two acre limit.
I mean, I think you've done as much as you can under existing law. I mean, there's, we're not rewriting state code on agricultural and forestry land clearing.
Uh, and I was simply bringing it up to make it clear to colleagues that where we can restrict up here, but you still have the ability to clear down here for these particular activities.
I, I guess it's a distinction that, that at least in my mind is, is the residential use. So you're only restricting that, that the rest is falling on the agri- agriculture, which.
Could be clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's the case in any.
Yeah, okay, I'm good. Then if I can ask another question, maybe you'll defer this to, to the applicant. But on page six, or four, four of their report, it says. The revised plan sets aside fourteen point nine acres of the southern portion of Spring Hill Farm for a permanent conservation, I guess, easement. And so I don't understand how this project. How, how, I don't understand if that's what we're doing here, if that's just was for our information only, which it could have been just for our information. But I don't know how we're talking about these two lots, and that has to do with the, well, we can't see, and I wrote it down somewhere, we can't. And that has to do with the, oh, there's a farm, um. That's better, I can't see that. None of us can see that, uh, you need to have like a twenty-year-old on, on this.
This right here.
Yeah, yeah, the one up at the very top, where I think it's like twenty. Oh, fifty-six. Fifty-six, ninety-five. Bingo.
Right, so there is the um, there are these areas that the applicant used the terminology conservation area. Um, and that's where through this process back and forth, we were trying to define what. The intention was and how we would administrate, administer that with the special use permit. Um, so those are areas where there wouldn't be any residential uses.
Um, but we're not settling that tonight. Because there's nothing in any of these conditions that talk about the, about the conservation on the farm and the, on the existing, on the pre-existing farm.
So we um.
And I'm fine with that, I mean, I'm just trying to clear up what, what are we saying yes to, and perhaps the applicant can speak.
So the conservation areas are an element of the proposed lot layout, so there wouldn't be any residential activity in those areas. They would just remain for agricultural and forestal uses and also be subject to the additional stream buffer and best management practices, conditions.
Okay.
But how does that differ from a normal subdivision? It seems like that that's already true. In according to our water protection ordinance, you know, residential development wouldn't be within that one hundred-foot buffer. They should be required to maintain that hundred-foot buffer. Doesn't seem like we're getting a whole lot more than is already under the water protection ordinance to begin with, except for this bit about um requiring fencing livestock out of streams. Um, and some of these required B N Ps, but.
I believe the conservation area B is actually wider than the stream buffer. Conservation area, uh, area B goes the full extent from the southern boundary to this road, and that's a greater area than just the stream buffer.
All right, any, any other questions for staff? Great, we'll probably hit a lot of this in discussion, too. Yeah, so with that, I'll open the public hearing. Are there comments or presentation of the applicant? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ethan Miller. Um, the, this property, the, the.
Sorry, sir, could you state your address for the record as well?
My address?
Yes.
Two, two, four, seven Garth Road, Charlottesville, two, two, ninety-one.
Thank you.
Um, I'm before you tonight in support of the amendment to the special permits covering the Spring Hill Farm property in Ivy, which is owned by my wife Diane Edgerton Miller, who's sitting up here. Uh, and myself and our company, um, Blue Springs Land Corporation. Originally, this, this Spring Hill Farm property was um six hundred and ninety-five acres. It was owned by my wife's grandmother, Nettie Marie Jones, who was a longtime resident of Almar County. Um, yeah, in, in nineteen eighty-one, Mrs. Jones applied for, in order to divi- develop this property. Applied for its granted to, to special use permits, um, SP eighty-one dash one, eighty-one dash fifty-five. And that, that uh divided the property, that six hundred and ninety-five acres into a total of thirty-three lots. Uh, containing approximately a hundred and fifty-three acres plus ten acres of roads and a residue parcel approximately five hundred and thirty-one acres. So the total was about thirty-four total parcels. Under the zoning ordinance as exists then and existed now, if you look at the uh, the number of, of rights that this property could have been divided by right. They come up with either forty-one or forty-two, the difference tonight is not really relevant, because um it. Today, there are thirty-four parcels, when we get, if this pro- uh, if this proposal is approved, there'll be thirty-six. So in any case, they're less than the forty-one that could have been developed by right under the ordinance then and under the ordinance now. In any case, um, a- a- as uh Ms. Ragstall points out, there was a lot of discussion about um why the special use permit process was used in nineteen eighty-one. That's forty-two years ago, um, that some of the property was in fact in the village residential at that time. Uh, but in any case, um, the, the um, uh, essentially the, the key is that, that the, the use of the special use permit process, as I understand it. Uh, was due to the size of the parcels, not the number. And the effect of the permits was to cluster the lots, which was deemed to be a, a good kind of, uh, excuse me, good, good way to con- uh, to develop the property. Uh, if the, the thirty-three lots had been uh developed strictly by right, uh, they would have consumed five hundred and three acres of the property rather than only about a hundred and eighty, whatever it is. My wife and I acquired the property after um my wife's grandmother died in nineteen ninety-one, and we've owned it for about thirty years. And in the forty-two years since the approval of these two special permits, although there were a couple. Um, uh, about, about twenty years ago, there was an attempt to, to uh, to uh, to divide one of the lots. In fact, um, uh, there have been no further divisions in the forty-two years since those two permits were, were um, were proved. Uh, currently, um, uh, Rebecca, can you, can you project the um, the, the area, can you project the aerial photograph?
Oh, we, I loaded your um map to that um computer.
I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to do it. I don't want to touch it here, oh, this, this, what do I do here? I'm not touching it, hold on, hold, hold the phone here. What do I do? Oh, you know. Do I have to have a, get a laser pointer, no, I don't know.
I don't know if we have the point.
Can you, can you?
This is a PDF.
And can you uh move it down so we can see that?
I don't know why. I don't usually present from here, here we go. Nope, that's not it.
Well, that's.
Where is Nicole, and we need her? Okay.
You're about to go down.
Nicole, will you scroll down? Yes, we just want to scroll down a little bit.
There we go.
Okay, thank you, Nicole.
Can, can we, how, how do I do this? Just, oh, I see now, okay, all right. So this is a map of the entire property, uh, if you can take, I don't know if you, can you see it on your screens?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, fine, all right. So, so the original, as you can see, the original lots were in this area, the, the thirty-three lots. This is the old farmhouse, which still exists, uh, which we expanded, I think we, we added i- initially lots five and six, excuse me. Uh, fifteen and sixteen were the um original farm, Spring Hill Farm property with the old farmhouse, this area here, which is still uses a farm now. Here, the phase two lots, phase one lots. So um, th- this, this area now is, uh, um, is the current residue, the four hundred and forty-two acres. And here are the, the two lots that we're proposing. There was some confusion, um, understandably, because the, the plat changed. In fact, uh, this area, which was called Conservation B, was at one time going to be part of the residue, but we've changed that for various reasons. And now it's all part of, of uh Lot One, so I think a gentleman's question was something about, uh, this is in fact part of Lot One now. Yeah, anyway, and this little piece of it is part of Lot Two. And then this area here will be part of the residue, but it will be subject to conservation in order to protect the streams. Principally, this is the stream right here, the tribute, this is the northern tributary stream, this is the southern tributary stream. Um, this is Ivy Creek as it, as it, it, it goes, it'll continues this way and heads off that way. So there's a substantial part, RB Creek goes all the way up here, I think, somewhere like that, to the, the bridge. Okay, anyway, um, we'll, we'll move on. I wanted you, I wanted you to have a sense of the whole property. Um, so what we've done here is to take, um, essentially what is, and uh, Ms. Ragstall was correct. This piece of the property is effectively uh segregated from the rest by reason of topography. It's so steep in here that there's really no way to access the southern part of the property from the northern piece. And so we thought this was a reasonable way to deal with the property after, only for thirty years was, let's, let's subdivide this off and, and the, the rest of the farm will be. Um, can be accessed from, from this, from this northern area, but this will be segregated off. And the entrance will be down here. There was a question about, I think, over here about why the entrance is there, which I'll address in a second. But in any case, I'll just finish. Um, s- so what we've done here is we've taken approximately, what do I have here, ninety-three acres uh here, ninety-three acres total. Um, and we've have, we have two lots, sixty-four acres and twenty-eight acres. And then the, this area, which is going to be conserved, I think it's about fourteen acres, which will be part of the residue, but it will, will be conserved. There'll be no additional development and it'll be, and it will be subject to uh, to the riparian buffers. Um, okay, uh, and, and I want to address one other thing, and then we'll, I, I, I can address the issues that, that, that the um, that the commission talked about. Uh, there's, there's um, the, the Almar County uh comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance uh in the rural area. Um. Presents as a, as one of its major goal, two major goals. One is to preserve the agricultural and forestal use of, of the properties in rural area, and the other is watershed protection. And I think that, that when we get done with this, I think this project, this proposal does both things. Um, in, 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 the, the um, the restriction that, that this, that the staff has, has proposed, that we've agreed to. Is that uh only two, two acres of these new parcels will be used for, um, will be allowed to be cleared for residential purposes. And what that means is if we have approximately a hundred and seven acres, including that fourteen, we have ninety-three acres in the two lots, another fourteen acres, that'll be conserved, that's a hundred. Another fourteen acres that'll be conserved, that's a hundred and seven acres. What we're saying is that only four of those acres, four of the hundred and seven acres will be converted from agriculture and forestal use. To residential use or essentially ninety-three percent or something like that. So in terms of promoting that particular goal, I think we, I think this does a good job of that. Um, similarly, although it's not before you tonight. Um, if if in the future, when the planning commission sees a a possible division of the the rest of it. If you, if you use the same kind of restriction, then then of the three hundred and forty-nine acres, only ten or twelve acres. Will be used for residential purposes. The rest will remain in forestal and and agricultural purposes. Um, I, you know, the the, i- in addition, I think that as you you folks undoubtedly know. There is a, there is a tremendous incentive, financial incentive for owners of parcels of this size to keep them in in. Forestal agricultural use and that's the land use taxation program. Uh, which substantially reduces the um, the the uh, real estate taxes and and I think that uh. Uh, finally, we talk about watershed project protection. That's a, that's a very significant part that Spring Hill property is. Located in the South Fork Ravanna Reservoir Watershed. Uh, Ivy Creek, which is a major contributor to the reservoir, runs in the eastern portion of the property. Um, and what we've done here is make, you know, fairly significant um, uh, uh. Protection to the watershed, which again is is promotes the, which is uh, which is uh, uh, the goal of the ordinance. Um, I'll address if if you guys want, the the issue that uh, I I'm I'm finished with this, so um, the the um. Due to size restriction of the and the size of these lots, there is, I think is correctly pointed out, there is no. Um, particular impact on on the adjoining properties. It's all consistent with the. Excuse me, the rural area. Um, and that the imposition of repairing stream buffers. Um, on Ivy Creek and stream tributaries will be on balance, a major benefit to the community. Um, in the form of public watershed protection. Um, I'm happy to address the the um, uh, if the commission members want. This this seeming inconsistency between uh, the the clearing issue that you can clear for, that we've restricted clearing for. For residential uses. But. Clearing is, land clearing is obviously uh, possible for agricultural and forestal uses. I'm happy to address that. I think it's, it's, it is in fact a, it is an inconsistency because if you, if you look at. The issue of forestry. So the, so the goal, so the goal is um, we're going to protect forestry. What is forestry? Forestry is the periodic. Cutting of forests and selling timber. That's what it is. Um, and if you're gonna, if you're gonna encourage forestry, then you're gonna encourage. Land clearing. Similarly, if you're gonna encourage agriculture, as gentlemen here have mentioned. Um, there's no, there's no uh, prohibition upon taking a forest and turning it into a field. Um, that's, that's simply going from agricultural to forest or you can go the reverse. So i- if the, if the, you know, again, this is, this is your ordinance and I'm not saying it's a bad ordinance, but. But it is in fact seemingly inconsistent, but in any case, we can address that some more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you could just hold on for one minute, we'll see. Are there any questions for the applicant from the commission?
Mr. Miller, since you're on the, on, on, on this right now, could you extend to the, to the completion of your idea? Because for me, that was, that actually is the, is 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 the tension here.
It is, it is in fact.
It is the tension.
And I think I have, I think I've thought about this a great deal and I think I have effectively an answer um, based on my experiences. So um, we have the Spring Hill Phase. Um, Phase Two Lots right here. There was a substantial amount of, th- this originally was, was had been planted by one of the prior owners. I don't know, fifty, sixty years ago or more in pine, a crop of Loblawi pine. And at the, at the point at which this property gets uh, the S P gets gets approved. Um, a large, it's time, the the trees are mature and um, and uh, so. Much of what was done in terms of clearing for Phase Two was simply harvesting the pine crop. Um, however, uh, my recollection is about twenty years ago, my um, if that's the right answer. There, we had an infestation of pine beetles in Almar County. I don't know if you folks remember that, but in any case, and. Large sections, twenty, thirty acres of the pine forest um, were were dead. And therefore needed to be clear cut. And so that's what we did in order to get rid of them and then replant. Well, um. There was enormous uh, way and cry from the Phase Two Lot Owners of, what have you done? You've clear cut these trees. And when I tried to say, well, this is forestal use and you have a residential lots that are next to forestal use. You can expect that we have commercial forestry and then we hired a commercial forester from somewhere. Who came in with these enormous hydraulic uh, saws, if you've ever seen them, and just wiped everything out. Um, and and uh, you know. And and we start again. So when you say to a homeowner, well, don't worry. This is in forestry and in ten to twenty years, the forester, forest, forest will come back. Let's, you know, most homeowners don't have a ten to twenty year um, time horizon to say, okay, I guess I'll wait. Um, and and usually they say, gee, I bought this house. Because I, I thought it was next to this beautiful forest and now you've cut it all down. Well, okay, uh, the, so let's go back to 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 farm use. So the current owner, nice man, Mr. Hedges, he has the the Spring Hill, Spring Hill House Lot Fifteen, Sixteen. And he actually has the audacity to try to actually have a farm. And so then, then apparently what he did at one point, um, he told me was he, he um, decided to put chicken litter. As fertilizer, which I guess is commonly used, you know, on his, uh, which you get very cheaply and put up. And of course, then you have the residents screaming that this place stinks. Don't do that anymore. And so here we have a a farm use. Arguably, commercial farming, which we're trying to encourage, and yet the homeowners, they really don't want to live next to commercial farms. They want to live next to pretty little horse farms, but not real farms. So you you know, it's. So, so what's the answer? Well, I I have two thoughts. Um, one involves uh, essentially a change in zoning, which is outside of purview of tonight. To say, well, you know, there's some areas of Almar County which we designate as rural, which really. Fifty years later, forty years later, you know, they're not that rural anymore. And if you look at this area of South Ivy, it's really not what it was. Fifty years ago. So maybe we ought to change the concept, but again, that's that's outside of what we're doing tonight, but that we really don't want. Commercial forestry or real live commercial farms in proximity to these folks and their houses, because they really don't want them. But I'll leave that for another day. The other issue, which I think is uh, which I I actually have. Based on the the thought of the um, uh, the clear cutting, my experience with forestry such as it is. Um, what I've learned is that commercial forests, number one, they're not three hundred and fifty acres or four hundred acres. Real live commercial farms are tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of acres, enormous pieces. Um, I've had some experience dealing with uh. Um, Large Company International Paper in Louisiana, which has a, which has, you know, seventy-two thousand acre pine farm. So that that's a real commercial farm, um, where they, where they have, you know, twenty-five year cycles and and they use the pulp for paper. So, so what do we have here? Well, this is mostly hardwood. And um, so that the the life cycle of hardwoods can be fifty, sixty, seventy years. Um, but at the end of, the end of, if this work, if this is really treated as commercial forest. Then we hire a commercial forester, he comes in and he clear cuts the whole place and replants the stuff and. Lo and behold, fifty or sixty years from now, it'll be back to where it is today. Again, that doesn't, that doesn't make the residents feel very good. But what I've found is this. That actually smaller parcels, such as the sixty-eight acre parcel here, we're talking about, or the twenty-eight acre parcel. That are owned by the people who live there. They will be selectively cut, not clear cut. And in fact, what we did uh, prior to this, we were doing some logging. And because we had in mind that we would subdivide it for for lots in the future, we didn't clear cut. We selectively cut. And so when you selectively cut, you leave lots of stuff. Um, and you you take out, you take out a, you know, a portion of it. Um, and I think that that's i- i- if, in fact, that it is more likely that the nice people, the Easters who are, who are gonna buy Lot One. They're not gonna clear cut the property. They'll selectively cut the forest, but they're not gonna clear cut it because it's their residence. So if you look at the impact of of small parcel. Forestry as opposed to a large parcel, I think small parcel forestry, which is managed by the the owners who live there. Is going to be much more, um, much better neighbors to everybody else than in fact, commercial forestry would be. Anyway, that's my thought. I don't know if you, if you have a, if you have um, it's obviously a big.
I mean, we, we could, we could extend this conversation. Thank you for that. Um, but basically what we're, we're saying is it is up at the discretion of the owner.
Right.
And so if you've got an owner who, who has a symbiotic relationship with their forest, then they probably won't touch it. But as we know, property changes hands. And so I don't know what the owner will be. I don't even know what the kids will be. Suppose this family, the Easters have, have kids. So we don't know. The kids come in, mom and dad have decided they're gonna live in St. Bart's and so. We're taking the, we're, they gave us the land to live on, so they're gonna take the trees down. All I'm saying is that I get where you're coming from. I understood what you did on in in Phase Two. How you sort of had to come in and deal with an unusual natural occurrence of an infestation. My concern is, and my concern, I'm sharing this and I agree, you can't do anything about this. What I'm gonna, I'm sharing with my colleagues is that we still haven't out to have a clear field. And and.
I'm sorry. Insta. Sir, I didn't understand what you, I didn't, I didn't understand what you just.
Still haven't out to have a clear fee, to have a clear field at the bottom of the, at the bottom of this property or the bottom.
I'm not sure I understand if if, no, I think there may be miss, I think there may be misunderstanding here. Th- this bottom piece is going to be owned by this, these people. It's not gonna be owned by the residue. It's gonna be owned by these, but this is a change. Initially, this piece was going to be retained as part of the residue, but not anymore because of various issues that came up. This entire piece. This whole thing is owned by the guy in Lot One, not the residue. This whole piece here is owned by Lot Two, not the residue. So I'm not sure, I, maybe I missed your point.
So when it gets converted to Lot One and Lot Two, do, that will it lose the the ag forestal designation?
No, no.
But then again, yeah, and and this isn't, this isn't.
No, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand your point.
Yes, can.
Even if it becomes a residential. Piece of property.
Right.
And Lot One. The piece that still has the ag forestal, depending on what the owner of Lot One, one, they can change, they could, they could cut it. Because it's it's forestal.
Sure.
Or they could convert it. So basically, even though we pro, even there's, even though there's a prohibit, uh, uh, even though we prohibit, or we can only utilize two acres. Which is, I I assumed in reading this was an attempt to say, we're still going to keep it a wooded acre, a wooded lot or a wooded, you know, a wooded lot.
Well, I I really think maybe the the, maybe the language. Uh, ought to be changed because the language actually talks about clearing and not about use.
Well, even if we clear two acres, they still have the ability to clear additional acres if they, if they say it's forest all over.
But this is, this is.
And that's, and that's fine.
You're absolutely right, but this is.
You can't do anything about that.
This is forest.
I I understand that.
All right.
So the might, and which comes back to my original conversation, why, if this is, if they can do whatever they want to do on this piece of property. Why are we holding it to two acres? Because they can do whatever they want to do in this piece of.
Well, the difference is if they were clearing it for agriculture or forestry, that implication is that land could regenerate itself. If they put a giant swimming pool on top of it, then that's a permanent change. So the 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 prohibition is against clearing for the residential uses.
And that's what it is.
Yes, but we have, we have very liberal um, uses for ag.
Right. That's not the applicant's fault or under his purview.
I can get to the same.
I think we've made it abundantly clear.
Yeah.
What we do, like do and do not control with this consideration.
Well, thank you very much.
I think Lonnie was trying to get a word in.
Yeah, great. Any other, any questions, any other questions? I I was just gonna point out, I mean, it's, it's not the forestry of this issue, because you know, with forestry, when you clear and you're bringing it down to stumps, you leave the stumps and then you replant. It's when, it's the conversion to the pasture that I think is causing the heartburn. And, and I don't know if it's something, because this is a special use, unusual special use. Um, case. If, if that, if that potential conversion to pasture could be removed out of this as a possibility. That would certainly, I think, reduce a lot of heartburn. Um, and and I think.
I I'm not sure that, I I hear what you're saying. I- i- is that, and I I don't know the answer to that. Is that something that? Would that simply have to be proffered by the um, by the applicant as opposed to, it it doesn't seem to me it could be a condition imposed by the. By the, by the commission, given that the comprehensive plan is is in favor of agriculture and forestry there. There's no, is there's no place in the ordinance that I've ever seen which would restrict um, the conversion of forestry land to agriculture unless I'm missing something.
No, you're right. In which, in which case I would, I mean, I, well.
I mean, I think it's a practical matter. I will say this. As a practical matter, again, I I understand the theoretical issues. As a practical matter, when you look at the, when you look at the topography, you have, you have the, you have the uh. The, you had the topo up there earlier. You had, you had the map with the topo on it. Earlier. Would you had the the plats with the topo? Um, no, there's the one that Kirk, it's, it's, it's the plat, that's it. So, so realistically, um, the property is fairly steep. As you can see. Uh, and realistically, in terms of what is actually gonna happen, what's actually gonna happen is. Um, you know, again, probability is it's gonna stay in forest. I I cannot see a residential user uh, clearing uh, those forests and using, I mean, it's always possible. But based on the topography and uh, you know, it's not something that is likely. Uh, now, that doesn't, that doesn't answer the, the, the issue as, you know, globally, but I think as to this property. It's likely that what's in agriculture now, which is the flood plain, will stay in agriculture and what's in forest will stay in forest. So um. E- even though I know you're concerned, there's nothing that that requires that to happen. I think as a practical matter, it's likely that's what's gonna happen. But in any case, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I'll open it up to any public that are currently present for comments. Being none, Carolyn, are there any online?
No, sir, there sure isn't.
All right, great, thanks. So with that, I will close the public hearing and I will bring it back to the commission. For discussion. Start here.
Sure. So, so I'm, I'm curious, you know. This is an unusual case for sure. I mean, it it seems strange that we would be able to put a condition on this that would require fencing livestock out of streams. Or installing watering systems or. Planting or, or following uh, best management practices. Th- those are pretty unusual conditions for. Or anything that we've had. It's. So I mean, it's, it's a strange, it's definitely a strange situation.
The applicant has put on their plan, if I read it, that they propose to protect the stream buffer. That's on their application.
That's right.
So all this is saying is, as part of doing what you say you intend to do. Please also make sure that you fence the cattle out of the streams, et cetera, et cetera.
And we will monitor it.
Yeah, so it's, it's saying, yes, good job, and we'd like to make sure that it's done really well. Versus us imposing a a totally. Out of, you know, out of the box, out of the blue condition.
I mean, it's also worth noting, this has been through the board of supervisors multiple times. And each time it's come back to them, they've said, no, no, really. This is the way that we wanted it. We can't guess what the board supervisors would do this time. But it is worth noting that history of it coming to the board supervisors multiple times and saying, no, really, we just want one access. By a bridge.
Although this is a different access than what was before them before. It's a better solution without the stream crossing. So.
But presumably that access, if it really is as old as they say it was, that access was there. During some of the past times when it was reviewed by the board of supervisors, so it was a potential option.
Theoretically, but the board is not.
Could you make sure to speak?
Sorry, the board is not on the, in the position on the dais to negotiate site design with the applicant. So that, you know, that, that's the tricky thing. We kind of react to what's proposed to us as as part of law. So I, you know, I still say the conditions were uh, fairly good and. Think we've gone around the region, as some would say, if you catch that reference to Scotland. Um, but the point is that, you know, I think we've, we've got a pretty good set of conditions here. I think we just wanted to be clear. What we are and are not able to control and what we are and are not doing with this site. But I, I don't know what more clear clarity we could bring to this.
Well, and the other thing I would say too is just the issue of. Of issuing a development rate in this circumstance. I mean, if we had an active transfer development rights program in Almar County, which I hope we will pursue. Then this could be easily settled by someone, you know. Purchasing or selling it a, a development rate. But we don't. Which puts us in the unusual situation of granting a development rate.
Really, yeah. Well, we could have another conversation about transfer development rights, but they don't work because. There's abundant development opportunities in our surrounding localities. It's a problem of supply and demand. So.
There's also, there's also the fact that they are still with, they are under their given development.
Yeah, they're doing less than what could have been done.
Somewhere around ten or so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I guess I have a, a, or if it's a question, or maybe I should just leave it. I think I'm just going to leave it alone. It was, I'll just say that for, for discussion purposes, it was around the fact that, that the conditions have brought up this issue of, the Ag Forestal District still remaining and not being impacted by that two acre clearing. And I wonder why that was even brought up, uh, because they could still, I mean, we could say that we're limiting clearing for residential to two acres, period. And then the agricultural forestal piece is just a given. And we probably wouldn't have had a lot of this conversation if that had been the case. I think what the, the conditions are doing is clarifying that it doesn't apply to those agricultural and forestal. And that might just have been something that the applicant had wanted to help clarify that two acre clearing. But in reality, it doesn't really change the availability of that right to the landowner.
Right.
Excellent. Any other discussion or is anyone willing to make a motion?
I mean, that, that exactly, Chair, was exactly why I was pushing on that.
Yeah.
But I was trying to get to the point that where I think the applicant went at the beginning of his conversation, when he was trying to unpack his reasoning, is that the county has property now that is un, that is zoned one way. But life has incurred and therefore, and there's this tension between, as we've seen in a number of places.
Yeah.
There's this tension between what the lived, with the lived action or the lived way in a particular part of our county and what a zoned way is in our particular county. And so as we sort of think through some of this, that we spend some time as staff, to spend some time looking at those places where we have that natural conflict. Now, I want to be very clear that I am not trying to do, I am not saying in a sort of, um, quiet or backdoor way that we should expand the development, although everybody is pretty, pretty much knows what I think about that. But, um, um, and that would, and in case you're, you, you're wondering, uh, you can just look at the smile on my face as I say that. But I am saying that as we are trying to live into the future of Alamo County, we've got some interesting tensions about what we've become.
Yeah.
And then, and what we're trying to hold on to.
Yeah.
And, and how do we, how do we shape the map? How do we shape our life to be able to do that? Some of us are seeing one of our, one of our, w- w- we're seeing a lot of conversation about something happening in one of our crossroad communities down Route 20, Route 29. And which is interesting about that, because there again, you have this huge, uh, legacy farm that was developed. And now all of a sudden, the people who have moved to the development in that legacy farm are, are having to figure out how it is to live in a place that has some development to it.
That has become popular.
That's become popular.
Yeah.
And so the whole idea, I think there are many places we could look at our county that we need to think about, how do we balance those things in ways that make sense going forward?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that, which I totally agree with, is that it also impacts infrastructure. So you're seeing that with the traffic and, you know, intersections and so on.
Like I say, intersections that are, that are inappropriate anymore, yeah. But in my case, I'm, I, I support this, this change.
All right, any further discussion? Not, do I, your emotion?
That you, that's you. It's you, Karen.
So I'm going to use my mic properly. No, did you want to make, I can make it. I move to recommend approval of SB 202200030 with the conditions as revised and presented in the staff report.
So Ms. Firehawk, it would actually be the condition, the, the language, because it's not what was in the staff report, the, the language.
What was on the screen.
Exactly.
Oh, sorry, I, all right. I will remake my motion, move, remove to recommend approval of SB 202200030 with conditions as revised and presented.
Presented this evening is fine.
This evening.
Great, you want to hear a second?
Second.
Awesome. Is there any further discussion? All right, if not, Carolyn, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Bivins?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, before we move on to the committee reports, I'd like to take a five minute break and we'll reconvene at eight o'clock.
Great.
Carolyn, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can, but I cannot see you.
Ah, there she is. Awesome, we are recording.
You're ready.
Great, thanks very much. All right, um, we are back together and we will move to committee reports. Anybody have committee reports starting down here? Now, Mr. Bivins?
Please. Well, actually, I was wondering if Mr. McDermott would give a report on, on, on the, uh, because we did have last week, the, the, um, MPO tech. I could not make it. And I was wondering if you would be so kind to give us a.
Unfortunately, I was not there either. And I am, I am happy to get back to you on the discussion that occurred there. I, I, I need to get with, um, my staff who represented.
My colleague, um, uh, Bill Palmer was, uh, um, kind enough to schedule a meeting next week to give, but I thought, so he's, he is going to give me an, a, a brief. And then I can bring that back.
Thanks. Any reports? Yes, the, um, the CROZACAC, um, discussed the mobile home park, um, over by the, um, CROZAC Park. And, um, it was a very refreshing conversation. They had a lot of residents that, that came out from, from the mobile home park out there and talked about how important it was to them for, um, having affordable housing. And it was also refreshing to see a lot of my, um, um, fellow residents of my district, um, you know, be very supportive of that and supportive of the expansion. And we're, um, and, and a lot of the discussion, you know, revolved actually around how can we make sure that this stays a mobile home park and isn't converted to some other use, which would displace the residents. And so it was, it was a very fascinating, it was a very fascinating discussion. Thanks.
The Historic Preservation Committee continues to not meet due to lack of quorum. So once again, uh, we did not meet this week. And I missed my CAC because I was on a business trip in South Carolina. But my chair to my left might have attended and might be able to give the CAC.
The Fifth Street? Yes. Thank you for that segue, it's perfect. Um, so I did attend the Fifth and Avon, uh, first meeting of the year, and there was not a quorum. So there was no, um, there was no vote, uh, for officers or approval of minutes, but that said, there was still an hour and a half worth of discussion, which I thought was really interesting. And thanks to our community connector, Allison, uh, who shared a lot of really great links, that were follow-ups to the questions that were received during the CAC meeting, and those were really, uh, focused on smart scale. And I'm happy to send these around, but there were some really interesting links here to the VDOTS, VDOTS Live YouTube channel. Some of the Commonwealth Transportation Board meeting, uh, Smart Scale website, et cetera. And so that was the majority of the discussion, um, during that CAC. Was that any other reports? All right, I will move it on to a review of the supervisors' meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Missile. I, I was not at the meeting, but I have gotten an update on the items that we were covered. Uh, I, I will say that we had a presentation from the consultant, uh, early on and, um, the Charlottesville Area Transit Director on the new micro transit program that we're, uh, working on. We received a demonstration grant from the state to start that in two areas, both in Pan Tops and in, uh, the Places 29 area. That, I'm sorry, the Places 29 North, so basically north of the river. It does extend down to, uh, Ryo Road, uh, in that area also along Ryo Road. The, the outcome of that is essentially that we are looking to put together a, um, an, a request for proposals from, uh, for a company to come in and operate that micro transit program. And micro transit, in case you don't recall, is this, uh, almost like an Uber or Lyft type service, but it's public transit. So it's less expensive, not as, uh, fluctuating in the cost and, uh, also addresses accessibility. Um, so that, that, that's what's, that was a presentation early in the day. And then for public hearings, um, the, the board heard, uh, the St. Paul's Ivy Church, which this commission also dealt with, uh, and that went through without really any significant issues. The, the board of supervisors approved that special use permit, um, for the preschool. And then also the Keswick School, if you recall that one. Uh, another special use permit to, uh, add some additional facilities out at the Keswick School. Once again, uh, that was approved unanimously. Rebecca was there for these, if you have any other questions. Uh, there, there was one other item on there, which was the Hollymead Substation Expansion Special Use Permit, um, as well, and that also got approved unanimously by the board of supervisors. If you have more detailed questions, Rebecca can help us with that.
Great, thank you. Great report for not being in the country. Any other questions? Great.
I have one, sorry.
Please.
Not for, not for you, Mr. McDermott, but for our council. So it, I have this memory and it might just be something I dreamed, but didn't, are, are we asking the state legislature to allow some of the subcommittees of the county to be able to meet remotely?
Like not, not just of Alamo County, I think that one of the county's legislative priorities, and I'm honestly, I'm not sure what the status of this request is, but to allow, um, local bodies to remeet, to meet all virtually, because as, as you may recall, there are five local bodies that are singled out in the state legislation who are specifically not allowed to meet all virtually. And I think that the, one of the, like, one of the county's legislative priorities was to request that those five local bodies not be prohibited. So it's not just Alamo, that, that I think that request is being made on behalf of all localities.
Okay, because I, I'm just wondering, something like the Historic Preservation Committee is stuck in this vicious loop, so we can't get quorum. People can't come to the meeting. We're not allowed to change the number of times we meet because we can only do that by in-person vote, which we can never have because we can't have quorum.
So the Historic Preservation Committee actually is one of those committees that is allowed to meet all virtually. I think that the hurdle that the, that that committee needs to get over is meeting in person to adopt an all virtual meeting policy. So you've got to, you've got to gather in person at least one more time in order to adopt the rule that says you can meet all virtually. And then from that point forward, you're, you can still have sporadic or occasional all virtual meetings, but you still can't go all virtual and nobody, nobody can.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And Commissioner Firehawk, I'll, I'll just say that we, we are working to address that issue, um, with the commissioner of, or I'm sorry, the, uh, chair of that committee and supervisors and county executives. So we're trying to figure out a way to make sure that we can get meetings occurring again for the Historic Preservation Committee.
Yeah, we've had several resignations in the past six months and, um, I, they shouldn't, as I understand it, count towards quorum if they've resigned. Right?
That's, that's correct.
Right, yeah, so I still, anyway, it's really.
So.
It's, it's at least six months we haven't met. I mean, we're trying, getting ready to do the comp plan, there are important conversations that should be had by that body. I'll leave it at that, okay?
Just add to the comment, so, so there, there is a bill, uh, I think it's a House sponsored bill at this point, to address that, and we read it, we came through, it, it's not really affecting, um, UVA, just because the way the board is set up, but, um, I, I didn't see a substantial difference from the policy now, but, um.
That we have.
Perhaps.
Okay.
That we currently have, I mean, it's very similar to it. Uh, and they just mentioned where.
Right.
You, you have to meet to adopt it, but it gives a flexibility for boards to adopt a, uh.
A policy for how, virtually meet, yeah, okay.
All right, thanks. Any, uh, new business or old business? No? Okay, seeing none, are there any items to follow up? All right, if not, I will adjourn the meeting at eight fifteen. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everybody.